You're alive.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Bangor City Council. Today is Wednesday, May 28, 2025. Today is 7:00 PM. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask the city manager, Deb Laurie, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Earlier this month, the city council updated its public comment policy. This change maintains the opportunity for residents to share their thoughts on city business on topics not specifically included on the agenda while allowing council meetings to run efficiently. Public comment at the start of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes. Upon completion of the city council business and at the discretion of the council chair, public comment may be reopened at the end of the meeting for an additional 45 minutes. Public comment, whether in person or via Zoom, requires you to state your name and whether you are a resident of Bangor. Our public comment policy that we adhere to governs topics, comments considered out of order or offensive or confidential, and again, the time limit of 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. Each person is limited to three minutes at public comment. The public comment period is for city council members to listen, not to respond or debate with persons during the public comment period, although we may ask questions. If you do not live in Bangor or own property in Bangor, please allow those who do to have the opportunity to speak first. If you'd like to offer a comment on any item related to city business not appearing on the regular agenda, you may approach the podium. On Zoom, the public can be recognized to speak by utilizing the hand raise function or on the phone by pressing the sarno.
I'll go first, please. I'll detach some tax along where I've got some of the numbers that I'm going to talk about. This is going to be my last time talking about taxes, my last time speaking, so as city manager any week, congratulations for getting through it all.
Esteemed members of the city council, my name is Scott Hardy and I live in Bangor. And I stand before you today, not as a seasoned orator, but as a representative of what I believe is the true heart of Bangor, its silent majority. Many of us have felt that our voices raised in concern over the years have faded into the background unheard. We've grown weary, perhaps even apathetic, because despite our pleas, the challenges we face seem to persist and the burden on our households only grows. But today that changes. Today we speak with one voice and that voice says we must not raise property taxes. Let's confront the stark reality in which we live in. Maine consistently ranks among the highest in the nation for property taxes. In fact, recent data shows Maine is number one in the nation for property tax burden, not 48th out of the 50, as some mistakenly believe. This means that when it comes to the portion of our income we pay in property taxes, no other state faces a heavier load. And here in Bangor, the situation is even more acute. Our property taxes are considerably higher than many other communities in a state that already leads the nation in property tax burden. Now let's look at the economics of our own community. Recent household income in Bangor stands at $58,096. Compare that to the state average of $78,172 and the national average of $79,466. While we are earning significantly less than our peers across the state and the country, yet we are being asked to shoulder a tax burden that is among the highest. This is not merely an inconvenience, it is a direct threat to the financial stability of our families, our seniors on fixed incomes, and the variability of many to remain in their homes. For our seniors, a property tax increase can mean the difference between staying in their homes and being forced to relocate, disrupting their lives and weakening the fabric of our community. For young families, it makes homeownership an increasingly distant dream, hindering new investment and growth within our city. For all of us, it means less disposable income for our local businesses, less opportunity to save, and a constant feeling of financial strain. We understand that the city has expenses and we value the services provided, our schools, our police, our fire departments, our infrastructure. But the solution cannot perpetually be to extract more from an already struggling populace. The city must not place any more tax burden on its citizens. We are at a breaking point. Instead of automatically resorting to tax increases, we remind this council, as the governing body of an incorporated city, your role is akin to a board of directors. We are compensated with a stipend and crucially, you are paid staff whose express duty it is to...
Thank you, your time is up.
I know, I think she's got to move.
Thank you for providing written comments as well. Appreciate that.
My name is Mike Gleason. I live on Walter Street. I'm here today to address the funding for the Bangor Public Library. My wife and I returned to Bangor early in 1973 and moved into our house on Walter Street in October 1976. In the ensuing 52 years, the Bangor Public Library has been a frequent and important destination to us, our children, and our grandchildren. Aside from the books, DVDs, genealogical, and other historic and entertainment resources the Bangor Public Library offers, not only to Bangor residents but to the entire Bangor region, it is a center of activity for an incredible variety of programs and activities. Because of certain social conditions, my wife and I are extremely pleased that the Bangor Public Library has taken steps to assure its patrons and visitors that they are safe and that the library maintains a comfortable environment to include live person monitoring of people entering and remaining in the facility. The Bangor Public Library is one of the most important educational and cultural activities in the region, and I sincerely hope that the city council will favorably consider funding the library's request for money. Thank you.
Thank you. For those who missed the budget workshop right before this meeting, the city council has not proposed to make any changes to the requested library funding for the year. We will be doing a first reading of the budget in June and then a second reading as well.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joshua Devlin. I live on Bowling Drive in Bangor. City and school employees are the most important part of our city government. Their skill and dedication provides the value services that Bangor residents value and depend on. From teaching our children, keeping us safe, managing our parks, keeping our roads and transit systems working, it's city staff who do the work. To achieve these ends, we expect the city to invest in employees, including fair paying benefits that would result in better employment fulfillment and retention. We urge the city to further develop training and related programs that result in employees staying. We call on the city to respect unions and refrain from wasting money on high-priced anti-union attorneys interfering with due collections, calling for givebacks from non-union members particularly while not doing the same to non-union employees or any further anti-union actions. City staff and our unions are skilled and ready to be partners with the city in finding ways to improve efficiencies in delivering of services in Bangor. It would be helpful for city staff and the city council to meet with us and learn about our work and our unions to further their understanding of the work we do and how improvements in our city can happen. Further, there should be a process of consultation with unions affected prior to outsourcing work. Thank you.
Good job, Jeff.
Hi, my name is Jamie Beck, and I'm going to skip the first half of what I was going to say, but it's still in my written comments about the library. Thank you for funding the library. The second half of my comments was addressing my utter disbelief at the council's arbitrary demand for the school committee to cut $165,000 from their budget. The rationale given that everyone needs to tighten their belts to avoid increasing property taxes is patently ridiculous when we examine the city's budget and needs as a whole. Our schools have consistently demonstrated fiscal responsibility, passing budgets that meet student needs. They've done their due diligence and have already made significant reductions, including roughly $500,000 due to the MEA's insurance rate changes. This additional arbitrary $165,000 cut is not about meaningful tax relief. For the median valued home in our city, this savings amounts to just $15 annually, or paltry $1.25 per month for those with escrow mortgages. This is a negligible impact on taxpayers, yet it could have a significant detrimental impact on our students and educational programs. This isn't a collaborative budget adjustment. It's bullying, plain and simple. It's an attempt to exert power and control over our highly competent school committee and superintendent undermining the vital work that they do, who are also elected like all of you were. Our children's education should never be subjected to arbitrary cuts such as insignificant taxpayer savings. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I'm a resident of Bangor. Some of the advisory committees for the city of Bangor have been meeting without a quorum, five unless otherwise stated. They have also been making motions and approving minutes. Members of the community noticed this and mentioned it during public comment time. As a result of these public comments, the city solicitor investigated the matter. The solicitor arrived at the conclusion basically stating that they can continue with the meetings despite not having a quorum as a public information meeting. However, no motions or decisions can be made. Here is the language from the Bangor City Council meeting regarding this ordinance, and then I put the language from the April 14 city council meeting. Despite this ordinance being passed at the most recent May 8 Parks Recreation and Harbor Advisory Committee, there were only three voting members present. A quorum is five. An emotion was made to approve the minutes and seconded, and the minutes were approved. The ordinance states that provided they do not take any votes or any other formal actions. And then I have a link to the video, which I'm not going to show here, of the Parks and Rec and Harbor Advisory Committee meeting on May 8. And the advisory committee chairs should be reminded that they still have to follow the rules of a quorum requirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hillary Simmons, resident of Bangor. I'm running today because many residents, myself included, are concerned about what happens to be selective accountability within our city government. Counselor Leonard has been publicly held accountable for speaking what he believed to be the truth. Yeah, when Gabrielle Wiley, speaking as a representative of the Advisory Committee of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Human Rights, labeled Counselor Fish and Mallor as white Christian neo-Nazis during a public city council meeting, there were no consequences. There has been no public apology, no acknowledgement from the committee, and no indication that her comments were addressed by leadership. This is unacceptable. If Leonard is expected to answer for his words, then so should Wiley, especially when she was representing an official city committee. You can't have two sets of rules depending on who's speaking and what side they're on. This brings me to another serious issue, the leadership of the council chair, carapelliteer. It's becoming clear that if she disagrees with you, you're penalized. But if she supports you, nothing is done. That is not impartial leadership. The role of a chair is to fairly guide the council, not enforce personal beliefs or selectively uphold standards. This city belongs to everyone, not just to those who align with one perspective. We need our leaders to protect fairness, civil discourse, and the integrity in public office. I am calling on the council to hold Gabrielle Wiley and the advisory committee publicly accountable for inappropriate comments made under the city's name. Reaffirm the city's commitment to equal treatment and accountability for all counselors and committee members. Ensure that the council chair leadership is applied with fairness and not bias. It's time for our city leaders to show that all voices will be treated with the same level of respect and scrutiny regardless of who is speaking.
Thank you. So since I was named individually, I think I have the right to respond. The meeting in question where Gabrielle Wiley made those comments, I was not present. I did not chair that meeting. At the following council meeting, it was the meeting of February 10. The following council meeting, the meeting of February 24. Dan Tremble, who was the chair, one that those comments were made, apologized publicly to both counselors Mallor and Fish for allowing the comments to happen. And then I also made the statement, you can go back and watch the video. I'm not asking you to speak again. Thank you. It's my turn. And then I also denounced the comments as being unacceptable and over the line. So those are the facts. The videos are out there for anyone who would like to watch them. And hopefully this is the last time that this will be addressed at public comment. We are at time limit for the initial public comment period. We will resume public comment at the end of the city council business. We're going to move on to consent agenda. Before we do, the council would like to remove Council Order 25-177 from the consent agenda and place it on new business. Consent agenda.
Minutes of the city council meeting of May 12, 2025, finance meeting of May 19, 2025, and government operations meeting of May 19, 2025. 25-162, resolve ratifying execution of a municipal quick clean deed for real estate located at 271 Elm Street. 25-163, order authorizing execution of a contract with Chili's Contracting in the amount of $450,130 to replace a hangar door at Building 600. 25-164, order authorizing the execution of a temporary use agreement with Enterprise Rent-A-Power Company of Boston LLC. 25-165, order authorizing the city manager to apply for $70,000 grant from Gilead to support the pilot of a one-stop shop program to increase access to health-related services for people experiencing homelessness and substance use disorder. 25-166, order authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with Avonaki Public Health and bonus to collaborate on a one-stop shop program to increase access to health-related services for people experiencing homelessness and substance use disorder. 25-167, resolve ratifying the city manager's actions to apply for FFY 2025 Airport Improvement Plan, AIP, grant funds of $4,363,926 from the FAA and $114,840 from MDOT for the runway rehab last 1,058 feet. 25-168, resolve ratifying the city manager's actions to apply for FFY 2025 Airport Improvement Plan, AIP, grant funds of $31,605 from the FAA and $832 from MDOT for the runway rehab pappy. 25-169, resolve ratifying the city manager's actions to apply for FFY 2025 Airport Improvement Plan, AIP, grant funds of $480,854 from the FAA and $12,654 from MDOT for taxiway A&amp;M preliminary design and data collection. 25-170, order authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Hopkins Paving LLC for construction services for the resurfacing of a portion of Union Street. Main DOT win 26930.00. 25-171, order appointing Courtney L. O'Donnell as interim city manager. 25-172, order authorizing a commission of cultural development grant of $1,964 to Bangor Ballet for their 2025 productions of Nutcracker in a Nutshell held at the Gray Sea Theater in Bangor. 25-173, order authorizing a commission on cultural development grant of $2,000 to Bangor Beautiful for support of the mural at Bangor's Down East School. 25-174, order authorizing a commission on cultural development grant of $500 to Bangor Public Library for an exhibit to celebrate the art and influence of Bangor artist Jeremiah Pearson Hardy. 25-175, order authorizing a commission on cultural development grant of $2,000 to Downtown Bangor Partnership to support the launch of a community-centered public art project called Free Art Exchange Boxes. 25-176, order authorizing a commission on cultural development grant of $1,964 to Maine Academy of Modern Music to support their Bangor Rocks Program. 25-178, order authorizing the solicitation of funds for Fourth of July Fine Works.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Move passage of the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no doubt, consent agenda has passage. Where else to committee of first reading?
25-179, ordinance amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code by adding flexibility to the reconstruction requirements for existing manufactured home parks constructed prior to 1971. First reading and referral to planning board meeting on June 3, 2025. 25-180, ordinance amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code by removing the limitations on number and square footage of temporary commercial vendors in the waterfront development district. First reading and referral to planning board meeting of June 3, 2025. 25-181, resolve accepting and appropriating $679,000 from the Maine Fire Protection Services Commission for the construction of a new fire live training building for the Bangor Fire Department. First reading. 25-182, resolve authorizing the city manager to accept and appropriate $951,845 from the Maine Department of Health and Human Services to implement the Maine Prevention Network. First reading. 25-183, resolve appropriating special assessment funds for Bangor Center Development District expenditures to be made in fiscal year 2026. First reading.
Will these items be referred?
Second. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no discussion, the items are referred to unfinished business.
Public hearing, 25-131, order declaring the structure of 271 Elm Street to be a dangerous building and authorizing a demolition.
Counselor Mallor.
I move to open the public hearing on Council Order 25-131.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Public hearing is open.
Seeing no one approach, I move to close the public hearing for Council Order 25-131.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Public hearing is closed.
I move passage of Council Order 25-131.
Second.
Wait, water?
Yes, Counselor Tremble?
Is it going to be an amendment to this?
It's coming up.
You have to do the amendment first, right?
He's got the script for it.
It's coming up.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Mallor.
I move to amend Council Order 25-131 by substitution to replace it with the amended Council Order that has been provided to the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We adopt as amended.
I move Council Order 25-131 as amended.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no doubt, 25-131 has passage. Next item.
25-154, ordinance amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code by adding a general public safety use to the airport development district. Counselor Fish.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This proposed ordinance change would update the city's land development code to add new public safety use to the airport development district ADD. Currently, this zone allows for various aviation uses, some manufacturing, industrial uses, hotels, motels, offices, transportation, restaurants, schools, and daycares. However, there is no option for government uses such as public safety. The proposed new fire training facility is slated to be located on the airport property in the ADD zone, but would not fit into the list of currently allowed uses in this zone. A general public safety use would allow for this and any other public safety related uses to be located in this area in the future. Additionally, this type of use would not be out of alignment with the other allowed uses in this zone. This item was reviewed and unanimously recommended at the planning board meeting on May 20, 2025. I move for passage of ordinance number 25-154.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Fish, we have a motion and a second on this item. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
25-154 has passage. Next item.
25-155, ordinance amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code by clarifying certain requirements for land development permits. Counselor Fornier?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This ordinance will amend Chapter 165 Land Development Code by providing additional clarification for land development permits. Specifically, the amendments would require a phasing plan for certain types of developments showing the work that will be completed before certificates of occupancy may be issued. Increase flexibility surrounding the expiration of land development permits and prevent a land development permit application from being accepted if the applicant has outstanding violations of the Land Development Code. These changes will help clarify the timing of certificate of occupancy issuance for phased developments, reduce the applicant and staff burden when permits expire and reapproval is necessary, and will help ensure the code violations are addressed. This item was reviewed and unanimously recommended at the planning board meeting on May 20 of this year. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for ordinance 25-155.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Fornier, we have a motion, we have a second. Questions or discussion on this item? Roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
25-155 has passage. Next item.
25-156, ordinance amending the city's disruptive property ordinance to update the definition of disruptive activities and expand its applicability. Counselor Beck?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This ordinance provision would update the definition of disruptive activities in the city's disruptive property ordinance and expand its applicability to, one, properties that are not residential, and, two, properties that do not have buildings on them. City officials have been fielding requests for help made by neighbors who live near nuisance and disruptive properties, and the proposed provisions would provide additional protection of citizens' legitimate interests and peacefully enjoying their property. The definition of disruptive activities would expand to include incidents where the police have been contacted and responded to a complaint and visited a property, and the visit results in the arrest of an individual on the property for activities that constitute a crime or civil infraction. The definition would also expand to include intoxication on public ways within 300 feet of a property that unreasonably disturbs the community caused by situations originating on the property. This item was reviewed by the Government Operations Committee on May 5, 2025. Madam Chair, I move passage of ordinance 25-156.
Second. Thank you, Counselor Beck. A motion, we have a second. Questions or discussion on this item? Roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor?
Yes.
Counselor Tremble?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
25-156 has passage. Next item.
25-157, ordinance amending Chapter 23 Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Article 6, by clarifying language and adding sections to address cause for removal. Counselor Tremble?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Chair, I move passage of ordinance 25-157.
Second.
This would amend Chapter 23 covering Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Article 6, Advisory Committee on Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Human Rights, by most notably adding language for notice and cause removal. This committee has struggled in the past with some members... This committee has struggled in the past with some members failing to attend meetings thereby hindering the ability of the committee to conduct its business. A language amendment proposes a process to remove individuals from the committee for unexcused absences when four or more meetings are missed in a year or three consecutive meetings are missed. This would ensure citizens appointed to the committee have expectations of attendance and create a mechanism for removal when warranted. Additionally, it would create a position for Bangor City Councilor appointed by the council chair annually to participate as a non-voting member. Should this be approved, the city council will want to consider similar language applying to other boards, committees, and commissions. This was reviewed and recommended for approval by the Advisory Committee on Racial Equity Inclusion and Human Rights at the May sixth, two thousand twenty-five meeting, and also at the Government Operations Committee meeting in May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Council Tremble, we have a motion, we have a second.
Have a comment?
Yes, I understand. Council? Council Beck?
Just a question clarification. Is there anything in here that's retroactive to previous absences? Like if someone's got a qualifying or this?
No.
So it's for absence going forward, okay.
Folks have public comments on this, you're limited to three minutes, you can approach podium.
Excuse that for, I'm a resident of Bangor. At first, I restated the language in this ordinance. So, a few years ago, it was decided by the Bangor City Council that a council member did not have to be assigned to these types of committees due to the number of hours necessary to attend all of these meetings. Thank you. There should be an attendance policy for all committees, I agree. However, the request for a city councilor to be on a committee should be a separate repressful ordinance. Since these advisory committees have been struggling, this advisory committee in particular has been struggling with attendance and obtaining a quorum, why is the city management and council allowing the continuance of this committee? This is also the advisory committee that has a member that called members of the city council white Christian neo-Nazis. The member of this committee who said this has issued no apology, he remains on the committee. City staff and council has not addressed the issue. Does this mean the city will allow this type of behavior from members of their committees? A precedence has been set, and the silence seems to indicate this type of behavior from a committee member is acceptable. Allowing the continuance of this behavior sets the tone for bad behavior which then tends to permeate to others' areas of the city, which it already has. This committee is supposed to be about being inclusive and welcoming. Does the welcoming only apply to those they choose? I believe this committee was started based on name-calling at the high school. The high school has an equity committee, and the city now has one as well. The city should consider having one high school level only since the membership attendance is difficult to obtain at the city level. This committee appears to be a political action committee, an extension of a type of group like the Maine People's Alliance. There is an emphasis on sexual orientation and immigration. There is little emphasis on senior citizens, the disabled, learning disabilities, or the recognition of months dedicated to diseases. They do not seem to consider the need to encourage the growth of families and the importance of the ability of senior citizens to age in place. The only solution is immigration. If Bangor considers being welcoming to families and job growth, the problem of student population decline could be improved. Why does the Advisory Committee on Racial Equity Inclusion and Human Rights want a councilor to participate as a non-voting member? If a councilor is chosen to participate in this advisory committee, it would appear that the councilor proves with the racist inflammatory language of one of its members. There are, these are two separate issues in this ordinance, attendance requirements and a councilor participating on advisory committees. These two issues were bundled together in this ordinance so that it would be more likely to pass. The issues should be separated and written as two separate ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for the city staff, may I answer some of those questions that are raised? Who staffs this, does the city manager staff this commission? I happen to, I don't attend the meetings, but I happen to watch the meeting when they were having discussion of this, and I think it was the first meeting after this incident that referred to, I don't know the committee member name, that came to, spoke at the council meeting and said, made some inappropriate remarks. But I think that, that meeting, I believe Council Mallor attended and made some comments, and I don't think this idea of a council on the committee just came out of thin air, I believe Council Mallor suggested it be appropriate to have, and he volunteered to be the council on the committee, is that inaccurate what happened at that committee?
I remember Counselor Mallor, I don't remember if it was his suggestion to have a councilor on the committee, but I understand, I do remember him expressing.
I thought that's where it came from, yeah.
Council Fish? Is there a standard, it seems like they meet every other month or once every two months, or, you know, is it when needed or an issue comes up, or, or if, when, do they have a regular schedule of meetings? So, what I might, where I'm going is, if they meet once every two or three months to miss three meetings, you're, you're missing seventy-five percent of your meetings, so I just wondered what's their scheduled meeting requirement?
So, the ordinance is currently written prior to the amendment states that they will meet at least quarterly, but typically they meet almost monthly. They may take one or two months off in the summer or depending on how their typical schedule falls, it may fall on holiday. But they, they likely meet between eight and ten times per year, which is why they went to, I believe it is now, the ordinance amendment says that they shall meet at least six times a year, but more often as anticipated. I think they were trying to weave the balance of, to your point, not wanting to go a whole year before you could actually reach out to a member who isn't engaging. I think the ordinance amendment will allow for some, the city clerk has reached out to the members, for example. I've had the city clerk reach out to the members who, you know, seem to have, you know, ended up with conflicts. So, this is another mechanism, we can reach out even before that threshold just to make you know, just to make you aware, these are the changes, we've seen you've struggled, you know, and try to encourage people. If you want to come back, that's great, but if it doesn't work for your schedule anymore, that's fine. Let us know and, and let us provide an opportunity for someone else to serve.
Thank you. Public comment?
Hillary Simmons, I'm not going to go back over what I already spoke about, but I am going to touch about committees that serve our city should model the values of respect, civility, and accountability. When there is no consequences for deflumatory language and no collective statement to clarify that such views do not represent the committee or this council, it gives the impression that behavior is acceptable. That is quite frank, frankly, is unacceptable. Beyond this concern, the Advisory Committee of Equity struggles with basic functionality. The committee rarely has a quorum and is often unable to vote or take meaningful action. Attendance has been poor. It has been noted at prior council meetings that some members use these roles to pad resumes or as a launchpad for future political ambitions without genuinely contributing to the work. The proposed ordinance to address attendance issues is absolutely appropriate. Accountability should be a baseline expectation for all who serve. However, I do question the request within this ordinance to assign a city councilor as a non-voting member to this committee. Years ago, it was rightly determined that not all committees need a councilor in attendance. If this committee is consistently unable to meet due to its own members' lack of engagement, what justification is there for adding a councilor to the roster? More importantly, given that this committee has not publicly rejected Ms. Wiley's remarks, the inclusion of a councilor could be seen rightly or wrongly as an endorsement of her views. This is a risk, this is a risk this council should not take. I urge this body to act, first by addressing the issues of Ms. Wiley's remarks publicly, and second by reevaluating the structure expectations of this committee. The residents of this city deserve better. We deserve advisory committees that reflect the values of equity and integrity, and we deserve a council that stands firm against decisive rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Roll call vote.
Councila Beck?
Yes.
Councila Dean?
Yes.
Councila Fish?
Yes.
Councila Fornier?
Yes.
Councila Mallor?
No.
Councila Tremble?
Yes.
Council Pelletier?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Twenty-five dash one five seven has passage. Next item.
Twenty-five dash one five eight ordinance amending Section two ninety-one dash forty-two of the Code of Ordinances to allow on-street parking during the winter except during a snow clearing order. Councila Fish?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This order would change the language and it would be amend the city code of ordinance to allow citizens to on-street parking during the winter except during snow clearing orders. The amendment would also codify the locations where citizens may park off-street during snow clearing orders. This item was reviewed and recommended for approval at the Infrastructure Committee meeting on April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-five dash one fifty-eight.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, thank you. Council Fish? Any questions or comments on this item? Council Tremble?
Thank you, I know, I understand, I don't need to tell you, it's an ordinance and a roll call, but I just want to explain why I'm voting against. I understand the intent of this, and I think we tried it this year, and I unfortunately wasn't able to be at the committee meeting where this was discussed, but I don't think it was that successful. I mean, as I've driven around, I drove around, this was a very mild winter in Bangor, and I saw a lot of neighborhoods where people didn't leave during a snow event, and we plowed around them, and it stayed there for a number, a long time, and it made driving in neighborhoods very dangerous, dangerous for emergency vehicles, and I, I just don't think we enforced strong enough towing people that stayed on the streets in storms, so I just don't think it, I don't think it worked well. I'm going to vote against.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote.
Councila Beck?
No.
Councila Dean?
Yes.
Councila Fish?
No.
Councila Fornier?
Yes.
Councila Mallor?
No.
Council Tremble?
No.
Council Pelletier?
Yes.
Three yes, four no.
Twenty-five dash one five eight fails. New business.
Public hearing, application for special amusement license renewal of Waterfront Concerts LLC doing business as Waterfront Concerts, One Railroad Street. Council Fornier?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to open up the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Public hearing is open.
Seeing nobody approach, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Public hearing is closed.
I'd like to make a motion for the application of special amusement license renewal for Waterfront Concerts LLC doing business as Waterfront Concerts at One Railroad Street.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, the application is approved. Next item.
Public hearing, application for special amusement license new of Salt Main LLC doing business as Salt North Tap Room, sixteen Union Street. Council Fornier?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to open up the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Public hearing is open.
Seeing nobody approach, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Public hearing is closed.
Madam Chair, I'd like the application for special amusement license new of Salt Main LLC doing business as Salt North Tap Room at sixteen Union Street.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, special amusement license is granted. Next item.
Twenty-five dash one seven seven order authorizing execution of two land lease agreements with Enterprise Rent-A-Car Company of Boston LLC. Council Fornier?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Chair, I move to postpone council order twenty-five dash one seven seven to the regular city council meeting on June ninth of this year.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Do you want to explain to the public why we're moving?
The reason was the, the square footage was in error, and we'd just like to make sure that the order has the appropriate square footage.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second. Seeing no doubt, the item is moved. Next item.
Twenty-five dash one eight four, order authorizing the naming of a section of trail that connects Sylvan Road to Stillwater Avenue, Talbot Trail, in honor of Gerald E. Talbot. Council Mallor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This orders will authorize the naming of a section of the trail that connects Sylvan Road to Stillwater Avenue, Talbot Trail, in honor and recognition of Bangor native Gerald E. Talbot, Mr. Talbot grew up in Bangor and was the first African-American in the Maine state legislature, and has dedicated significant time and energy in the fight for civil rights. With the Bangor Y acquisition of a large portion of the existing public property recognizing Mr. Talbot's legacy, the city wanted to ensure his contributions to our community and state continued to be recognized.
Thank you, Council Mallor?
I move item twenty-five dash one eight four.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Council Tremble?
I just want to thank the Talbot family for their flexibility on this issue. They've been very gracious in working with the city. It was in the fall of twenty twenty-one that we dedicated Second Street Park to Gerald Talbot, and I think it was on occasion, it was ninetieth birthday at the time, so he's going to be ninety-four this fall. So, he's watching, happy birthday, and his brothers, I saw his sister-in-law just yesterday in the store, so it's great, they've been along, obviously, they grew up with Bangor, I think his relatives worked for the railroad and the Bangor house, and he grew up in the section of Bangor where the Irish and the blacks grew up, off the lower west side, so it's great that he was able to go on and live in Portland, raise his family, and be the first African-American in the Maine legislature, so, and his daughter's done very well, too, as a Speaker of the House in the Maine Legislature, so it's, it's an honor well deserved.
Thank you, Council Tremble. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing no doubt, twenty-five dash one eight four has passage. Next item.
Public hearing, twenty-five dash one eight five, order Bangor Center Development District Establishment of Implementation Assessments. Council Tremble?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Chair, I move to open the public hearing for twenty-five dash one eight five.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Public hearing is open.
And seeing no one approach, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Public hearing is closed.
This is accordance with MRSA Title thirty dash A, Section fifty-two twenty-eight. The city has fulfilled extensive statutory notice requirements, including publication of a description of the area affected, and the maximum rate of assessment for a thousand dollars of assessed value as of April one, two thousand twenty-five. The notice was published in the Bangor Times News. The Downtown Bangor Partnership has requested a seven-cent increase, increasing the revenue by twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars, that's a seven-cent bill rate increase. If approved, the assessment will be seventy, seventy cents per a thousand dollars of assessed valuation of the Bangor Center Development District and a two cent per a thousand dollars of assessed valuation of the overlay. In total, the special assessment will raise approximately two hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars on properties located in the Bangor Center Development District. The proposed budget for the Bangor Center Management Corporation Downtown Bangor Partnership for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six program is six hundred and one thousand sixty-two dollars. Anticipate additional revenues include requested downtown TIP funds in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the services from Street Plus and forty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars for administrative support. In addition, the partnership anticipates sixty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from sponsorships, events, and marketing. This was reviewed at the Budget Workshop on May seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Council Tremble. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no questions or doubt? This item has passage. Next item, please.
Public hearing, twenty-five dash one eight six, order adopting municipal development program and financial plan for the Bangor Center Development District. Councila Dean?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Per to voting on this order, the council is required to hold a public hearing on the municipal development program and financial plan for the Bangor Center Development District. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is open.
Can I just get a little more clarification on the safety and security of the three-sixteen? What is included in that?
I think that most of it is related to the Street Plus work, but I think Betsy Lund be the executive director of the Downtown Bangor Partnership can provide more detail if necessary.
That's your question, would you?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so the, the safety and security is for the Street Plus Downtown Ambassador Services, and they work predominantly evenings and weekends when we don't have B- Cat, our Downtown Custodian, or Officer Larby on patrol.
Okay. So is this three-sixteen in addition to the two-thirty from the other that we just approved?
No, it's inclusive. So that's a combination of the TIF dollars plus money that's coming out of the special assessment district funds.
Okay. So then, second question, the general and administration of eighty-eight thousand, and then we also, I think, had an additional of forty, forty-three-seven? Is that new positions within the downtown area, or is that?
No, that's, the, is staff salaries and overhead, like rent.
Okay. How many staff do you?
We are actually growing from being one-point-six-six to being two.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing no one else approach, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Just checking one line. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
This order will adopt the municipal development program and financial plan for the Bangor Center Development District. This is for the City Council to consider the program to be implemented for the Bangor Center Development District. The program has been prepared by the Bangor Center Management Corporation Downtown Bangor Partnership. Budget highlights include: marketing, ninety-one thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars; beautification, forty-six thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars; events, forty-eight thousand eighty-five dollars; networking and outreach, ten thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars; safety and security, three hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars; general and admin, eighty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars, for a total of six-hundred-and-one thousand six hundred and two dollars. This item was reviewed at the Budget Workshop on May seventh, 2025. I move passage of Council Order twenty-five dash one eight six.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Council questions or discussion? Seeing none, twenty-five dash one eight six has passage. Next item.
Twenty-five dash one eight seven, order appointing nominees to the Opiate Settlement Funds Advisory Committee. Counselor Trumbull?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Chair, I move passage of Order twenty-five dash one eight seven.
Second.
And this will appoint nominees to the Opiate Settlement Funds Advisory Committee. Council Order twenty-five dash one four seven, adopted on April twenty-eighth, 2025, establish an Opiate Settlement Funds Advisory Committee. The purpose of this committee shall be to advise the City Council on the best use of the City of Bangor's opiate settlement funds in a manner that is transparent, fair, and equitable. In order to ensure the advisory committee membership encompasses the diversity intended by the City Council, the order establishing the committee defined membership roles to ensure wide breadth of direct experiences were represented. City Council's nominated members of the public to fill six membership roles who possess a wide variety of perspectives, including individuals who have lost a loved one to overdose, a professional with experience in treatment, recovery housing, prevention-focused youth programming, and harm reduction. The nominated members will be joined by City Council and two city employees. All nominees have been contacted and were pleased to be asked to participate in this important endeavor.
Thank you, Counselor Trumbull. We have a motion, we have a second. Questions or discussion on this item? Counselor Beck?
Just to say, I'm definitely voting in favor of this, and I appreciate all the people who are willing to step up and do this very important work and serve their city in this capacity. It's needed, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Seeing no doubt, twenty-five dash one eight seven has passage. Brings us to the end of the regular agenda. If I have shuffled my pages correctly? I have. Somebody tell me if I have not. Is there anyone who has not yet spoken who would like to offer public comment? Same rules apply, three minutes.
Hi. All right. I am finishing up what Mr. Scott Pardee began, so.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Tyler Shanahan, and I reside in Bangor on Ohio Street.
Thank you.
As I said, I'm just finishing up what Scott said. So instead of automatically resorting to tax increases, we remind this council as the governing body of an incorporated city that our role is akin to a board of directors. You are compensated with a stipend, and crucially, you have paid staff whose express duty is to diligently scrutinize every line item in the budget, identify inefficiencies and redundancies, and locate all available funds, including potential savings within existing accounts. We implore them to do more with less. Furthermore, we urge you to aggressively seek out every available grant, every state and federal funding opportunity, and explore innovative and equitable revenue generation strategies that do not disproportionately burden homeowners. Let us foster responsible economic development that genuinely benefits current residents and expands our tax base through growth rather than through increased individual levies. The silent majority of Bangor has been patient, but our patience is wearing thin. We are asking for responsible governance for a city that understands the financial realities of its citizens. We must not raise taxes, we must leave them the same. It is time for the city to stand with its residents, not against them. Thank you on behalf of all of them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Steve Santiago. I live in Hampton. I work in Brewer, and I spend a lot of my money here in Bangor. I'm going to put some emphasis and focus on what members of the union were attempting to accomplish. We're having change in leadership again, and we hope that that can be the basis of trying to expand our horizons, try to come at it in a different way, to try and work more with the, with the city and the unions together for better efficiency of, of service. This especially for me is where the Community Connector Service comes in. We see, we had a meeting today at BACS, and it was interesting, the numbers were looking good, and I'm very happy with that, because we share the same goal, which is to increase membership, increase ridership. So with that being said, we want to try to look at what the issues are, and the issues continue to be that bus drivers are not allowed full-time status. And we've had this discussion many times, and all I can say is, I hope you just don't believe what you're given, try to find out more information, try to talk to the people that are on the bus, people that drive the bus, and see where we're going from there. Because the numbers are starting to look good, but there's still deficiencies, and we are not going to attract full-time bus drivers, career-minded bus drivers, that think they have a future here in Bangor, not with the current system in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we will close public comment. Brings us to the end of the regular meeting. Do we have any comments from staff? Seeing none, tonight I'm going to deviate from tradition a little bit by making the first closing comment. I would like to close with a few words honoring and celebrating someone whose impact on our city has been nothing short of remarkable. Tonight is City Manager Debbie Laurie's last council meeting.
Woo hoo!
She retires at the end of the week, although I think she's already out the door. Some of you may not know, Debbie began her journey with the City of Bangor back in July of nineteen ninety-two as a staff accountant. I was fourteen.
Oh, God. At least you were born. At least you were born.
In two thousand and one, she was appointed Finance Director, a role she held with distinction for twenty-one years. Her dedication, professionalism, and deep understanding of municipal finance made her instrumental in many of the city's major initiatives, including the pre-planning and development of the Cross Insurance Center. She became Bangor's go-to expert on casino matters, and demonstrated a real knack for creatively structuring financing to stretch every dollar and save the city money. But Debbie's commitment didn't stop at the numbers. An accountant at heart, she helped guide the city through over twenty-five budgets, each one reflecting not just her technical skills, but her deep care for our community. In February of twenty twenty-two, Debbie took on the role of City Manager, and with that has overseen an increased response to homelessness, renovations to City Hall, which unfortunately aren't done tonight, creation and implementation of a comprehensive plan and a regional climate action plan, and has guided council through some very difficult conversations post-pandemic. After nearly thirty-three years of service, Debbie is retiring, but her legacy will remain deeply rooted in the city's foundation. Debbie, thank you for your commitment, your wisdom, and your heart. We know you live here, you have skin in the game, and you want what's best for Bangor.
Yep.
We wish you the best in the next chapter.
Thank you.
Counselor Beck?
I wish you well in retirement, and I thank you for your many decades of service to this, this city. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Dean?
Well, you have meant very much to me since I started in this position. Your breadth of knowledge is just incredible. Wish you all the best, and I hope you'll stop by and watch your garden these days.
Yes, right back at you.
Good night, Bangor.
Counselor Fornia?
Well, how long have I known you?
The kids were in kindergarten, because they're in the same class.
Yeah, so Jacob and J.C.
Are both thirty-two.
Twenty-six, yeah, so it must have been about twenty-six years.
So I've been here longer than they've been alive.
Yeah, so our relationship goes back a long time, and it's been very mutually respect for one another. We've become a good friend. We served on the Maine Discovery Museum, I think I got you on that board.
I think you did, American Folk Festival.
Yeah, at the Folk Festival.
I believe I returned the favor and got you on the library.
Yes, but I think that was, you got me on the library, so, thank you for all that you've done for the city. On that note, another note, I just want to, there's a comment made earlier tonight about Council Chair. I have a lot of respect for Council Chair, what she's done over the last year and a half, and I think she swams that gavel down, and it is all in respect of fairness, so I think that's just important for you to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good night.
Counselor Trumbull?
I do have some comments about the current City Manager. I want to echo Counsel Fornia's last comments about the Council Chair impartiality and fairness. I do want to comment briefly on the school department, and I'll comment probably later when we vote on the budget, but I think it was unfortunate, I think, we've had a member of this council prefer the Bangor school system as basically a daycare center, and it's ridiculous. I mean, they do good work day in and day out, not just the teachers and everybody in that system, but the school department, and the school committee, and the superintendent. First time in fifteen, this is the fifteenth budget I voted on this year, we've never ever in any of those budgets have asked the school committee to make a cut, as far as I can remember. This year, we asked them to make a cut of a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, not a significant amount, but I think there'd be years when there would have been an uproar, like, what are you doing, asking, how dare you ask us to do that? They didn't. They met tonight, they only cut a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars out of the budget, they cut three-hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, they didn't cut any personnel, they didn't cut any program, so they acted responsibly, they were asked to make a modest cut, they cut three-hundred thousand dollars tonight out of the budget without cutting personnel or program, so I think they've acted very responsibly, and they do a great job. You can look at the results, how many National Merit Scholars we have in the Bangor school system, how many kids we graduate, how many are going on to Ivy Lake Schools and trade schools, and just going on, doing great things in life, so I think it's an insult that was made to the men and women and the people of Bangor school system, so just want to make that clear. Now, to the City Manager, who I guess I've known, not as long as she's been here, but quite a while, and actually prior to her starting at the city in nineteen ninety-two, she actually did the audits for the city, for a private firm that did the city audits, so maybe that's how we found her. But since I've been on the council, I think, especially somebody in a financial leadership position, you kind of want somebody that's going to keep the rider pretty steady and keep, keep the ship going in the right direction. I think Debbie's always done that, she's given us the facts we need, and then when she stepped in as City Manager, and two thousand, the end of two, I think it was probably the end of two thousand and one, wasn't it, or early two thousand?
Interim was twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, so it was really appreciated, and you, when you took the job, you told us how long you'd be here, and you, you stuck to that, and so we didn't have expectations you're going to be here to ten or twelve years, and you got us through tough times, and I think, well, one thing too, in all the budgets you did, I think, in all the CAFRs, what's that, consolidated something, financial report?
Well, it's now what's called an annual comprehensive. Now it's, now it's.
There's some award, is there some recognition for excellence?
Excellence in GFO.
And I think we probably got that every year we had a budget, and I know your predecessor would always want me to make a point of that at the council meetings, you didn't really want that recognition, but I think it's important, that's a pretty big deal, that for every year we got that recognition with our financial reporting, so I just appreciate the job you did for the City of Bangor, but for me as a counselor, we were, got great help, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Fish?
I, I know Debbie from, oh, before I got on council indirectly, from my husband being a longtime employee on the police department, and I just want to thank her for her patience and her direction. I haven't had a lot of municipal experience, I got a lot of experience being a Bangor resident, and because of my love and passion for Bangor, I, I got involved, and she gave me endless hours, always available for questions, and her deep-rooted history and knowledge with the city and her overview made my, you know, getting, kind of getting caught up a little bit easier and faster, and, and just always so supportive. And I just want to wish you the best of luck, and hope we see you around Bangor, I hope you still somehow come and maybe speak at the podium, I'd love to see you on the other side.
Public comment. My new hobby.
You'll be a master at it. So I just wanted to say sorry to see you go, but happy for you. And, and for the residents and the speakers tonight, you know, I used to sit where you are, and I used to come, or sit with my colleagues and complain and say how, you know, I could do things better, or what everybody is doing wrong, and I will tell you, there's still a lot we could do better, and I think collectively, we're all trying to do that, and we all are trying to achieve to learn more about our departments, our weaknesses, our strengths, how we can help them better, and, you know, maybe with a new manager coming on, it's a good time for us to reflect upon ourselves, and reflect within the departments, and see how we can improve our relationships and make Bangor better as a whole. Being on this side, I will tell you, there's a lot of work, a lot of passion, and a lot of good things going on, a lot more that it's hard to see from that side, but thank you for coming and sharing your comments, we do all listen to them, we all do take them to heart, and I appreciate all the residents and all of the people that work within our departments. With that having said that, good night, Bangor.
Thank you. Counselor Mallor?
Well, Deb and I have had words over the years, good and bad, but I think we've always agreed that both of us work for the betterment of the city, even though we might not always agree, and I don't expect everyone to agree with everyone anyway. So it's been fortunate working with you, learned a lot. So it's been fortunate working with you, learned a lot. I'm sure you haven't learned much from me, but that's all right. You've learned what I feel anyway, and wish you the best in your retirement. Don't get too much sun while you're out working the pad. Good night.
Thank you. Can I ask for one moment? Oh, yes. Can I get to have the last word? Absolutely. I know many of you may think I get it anyway. It's really a pretty bittersweet night. I've spent thirty-three years of my life here. I have a great deal of gratitude, reflection, and anticipation of what lies ahead. I'm extremely grateful for those I've had the privilege to work alongside. I'm very fortunate to work with some of the best and most dedicated people I know. I've had a number of colleagues who've become friends. I've had mentors who've guided me, and residents who remind me every day of why what we do matters. I'm kind of excited to step back and become a resident. It'll be an interesting perspective, but just know, my love of this city will always remain. You'll likely see me around cheering from the sidelines, staying involved in new ways, and, you know, just generally, probably, I get asked, do you want to volunteer? I'm like, oh, sure. So now I'm into volunteer world. I really want to thank all of the employees, the department heads, the city councils, the community partners, and of course, our residents. The trust, engagement, and resilience, you've always been the driving force behind not only what I do, but what every member of this city staff does. I'm really proud to be part of the growth and progress we've achieved, and I'm really pleased to be able to call so many of you friends. So, thank you.
Thank you.